Recording in progress.
Good evening, split board. This one should be a pretty short meeting. We've got lots going on the next few days, so this will be good. All right, so I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30 on May the 6th, 2025. We always start off with public comment for anyone that wants to talk about anything briefly that's not on the agenda. I see no one in the room that would, I think, fit that bill. Vanessa? Okay, all right, let's get to the main event here. So Chief Newell.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for having us here tonight. We're here to request the board's appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Mayer to the position of full-time police officer with the Southborough Police Department. Mr. Mayer is a resident of Northborough, Mass. I'm sorry, Northbridge, Mass., currently working as a full-time police officer for the Northbridge Police Department. He also worked, he's been a police officer for approximately two years and has previously worked as a dispatcher for Northbridge and Douglas Police Departments. He has also obtained his bachelor's degree from Anna Maria College in Criminal Justice. We interviewed multiple candidates for the position, and Jeff did an outstanding job on his interviews with us. He has also successfully passed his background, his psych and physical examinations. We're excited to have Jeff as a part of our team, and with your expected appointment tonight, we look forward to having him start the field training program, which will be around May 19th. This addition to our department would bring our roster up to 20 full-time sworn officers with two more positions to fill for this fiscal year. And at this time, do you have any questions for myself or Mr. Mayer? Mr. Mayer, I'll call him Jeff.
Mr. Mayer. Al?
No, welcome to Southborough.
Thank you, sir.
I echo his sentences, sentiments. Welcome. It's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Reviewed the bio, looks great, and delighted to have you on board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard, and it's good to see you've got a healthy support contingent here tonight.
Thank you very much.
We're a tough group, don't you think?
Yes, ma'am.
But truly welcome. It's a great police department. You've got a great building. You've got a great group of people to work with, so I bet you are going to enjoy this.
Absolutely.
All right. Are you going to take any vacation at all between the two jobs?
Yeah, I'm actually going on a cruise, leaving on Saturday.
Good, good, good.
Make it back, dropping in.
Good, good. I always think the only way you can take two vacations is between two jobs, so you really don't have to worry about it. So, anyway, okay, Chief.
Okay. So we're going to be doing a small swearing-in ceremony on the 19th, but now we just need the board's vote for...
Okay, so I will make a motion to appoint Jeff Mayer as Police Department. Let me get it right. Full-time police officer.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, there you go, unanimous vote.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've got ink on my hands, so there you go.
Thank you all.
Party's out in the hall.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Here comes a tough interview.
I've already warned her. Come on up, Pat.
Wait a minute, where's your driver? Or your putter? You're what?
So, thank you for volunteering to do this. It's nice to see a woman step up for this. Golf is a, much as a woman's game, it is men's, I think. They play it a little bit differently and maybe a little bit nicer sometimes. So this is great. You've never been on this committee before, correct?
No, I have not.
Okay, for some reason I thought you had, but, okay. All right, so, as I told you, we're going to grill you for a few minutes, okay? Get ready for this, and then we will vote to appoint you. Al, anything for Pat as far as appointment?
No, not at this time.
Margaret?
I think you know the town well enough and the golf course well enough to be a very useful member.
I've been here for 47 years, so...
Yes.
As long as you don't live on Lata Squama Road.
Correct.
Very active place. Great time to be on the golf course committee. A lot of exciting things happening. Irrigation Project continues to move forward slowly, but it's going to be a great one to get done, and they've got some course improvements underway that hopefully will keep more balls on the course as playing rounds go up substantially. About three times as many rounds now as when St. Mark's was running the course. So, good news is it's going great. Bad news is it creates a lot more people on the course who don't play very well, so the balls go all over the place. So, more of a problem. But thank you for volunteering and delighted to have you on the committee.
Thank you.
Andrew?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for volunteering.
So, Pat, one of the things we have to ask you is what your handicap is. Do you understand that you have to have a certain handicap to do this?
I have to admit that I play in the Monday morning league and we don't keep score.
We actually did have someone that applied for this a few years ago, and he wrote on there what his handicap was, and I said to him, "You didn't have to do that." He goes, "I thought I did." I said, "No, you know, it's not a requirement to have a certain handicap to be on the golf committee," so...
We have a wonderful league on Monday morning that everybody is welcome and it's fun.
Yeah. Now, women, I think, have so much more fun at this than men do. You know, men, in my opinion, get mad when they shouldn't have. You know, women know how to play. They have some fun, and it's a good thing, so good for you. So you know, you know you've got to go downstairs after we vote and get sworn in at some point as soon as you can, and then you'll be officially on the committee.
Okay.
So with Jimmy Hagerty, with the town clerk.
Not tonight or tonight?
If he's here, you could. He might still be here. Oh, sorry, so you've got to have your letter before you can go do it.
Okay.
So, it'll be ready when?
We'll get that done tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Al, you want to make a motion to appoint Pat?
I move that we appoint Pat Lowly to the golf course committee for a term to expire 6/30/25.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
There you go.
So, 6/30/25, that's next month.
But all these expire every year. It's an annual appointment, so we'll...
So you'll get reappointed, and then you'll have to get sworn in again, sorry. Pretty close to each other. So, go ahead and get sworn in now, so you can get going, and then yeah, pretty soon you'll have to do it again.
For the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, as does, as will everybody else.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah, not Linda. Thank you, Pat. Okay, now we're going to go to, I guess, the main event. That's why Carlos is here, that's why Brian's here. So, we would have done this last week, but it didn't work that our OPEB auditors could, or OPEB consultants could actually come. So they're here tonight. We've got two people that are going to zoom in. They are Andrew Makarevich, I guess. Oh, sorry, Amanda Makarevich, I was focusing on the last name. Amanda Makarevich and Michael Bubalo. So are they here, Vanessa?
Yes.
Can you bring them both over here? Michael, welcome. Amanda, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there you are. There you are. So Vanessa, have you got your deck teed up?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, let's see what they want to do. Let them decide. Do you guys want to say anything before we put your deck up?
We have our introductions all built into our presentation, I believe.
All right, let's go.
Someone, there we go, there we go. All right, so my name is Amanda Makarevich, and joining me here this evening is Michael Bubalo. We're two members of the staff here at KMS Actuaries who work on the post-employment benefits other than pensions, or OPEB plan for the town of Southborough. And we've just prepared a little presentation tonight to talk about some of the key results from this year, and just a little bit about what OPEB is and what the reporting is that we do. Next slide. So just our agenda, like I said, quick introduction of us, a little bit of talking about the purpose of the valuation, the report, and the standards that kind of define how we do that report. Then we'll go through what goes into the actuarial valuation model, the plan provisions, you know, the items that are set by you for what the plan is, the assumptions we use on our end, and then just some results for this fiscal year 2024, as well as disclosures that go into your financial statements, and a little brief overview of the OPEB trust in particular, the assets that are helping fund the OPEB liabilities and all of that. So just a little bit about us. Our firm is KMS Actuaries. We have a pretty significant presence in the public sector, especially in Massachusetts. We have over 100 clients at this time, a lot of OPEB clients, as well as number of Massachusetts retirement systems. We've done hundreds of OPEB valuations over the years. I have been with KMS since 2017, so I've worked for a while on a lot of these clients. I started off as an actuary back in 2013, so I've been doing this for a little over 12 years now. Michael?
Great. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Bubalo. I am an associate actuary for KMS Actuaries, and I've been with the company for a little more than five years, and I have also helped with a wide variety of OPEB projects for towns, school districts located in Massachusetts. And I've also done a good amount of work for retirement system valuations for systems that are located in Massachusetts.
All right, so just the purpose of the valuation. So what, the reason we do this is because, first of all, it's required to be done every year. It gives the town a chance to periodically review both the liabilities and the assets for the OPEB plan. And then on our end, when we're completing these valuations, we're looking at the assumptions and the methods we're using, want to make sure that they're appropriate for what is being valued, that they're consistent with each other, and just they're reasonable. And all of this goes into, as actuaries, we have to follow what are known as actuarial standards of practice or ASOPS, and those, you know, have a lot of information defining, you know, how we set those assumptions, you know, kind of the requirements we need. Sorry, can you go back to that? Thank you. How we set those, you know, assumptions, the requirements for our reporting and all of that. And then the other things we do in our OPEB reporting annually is we develop actuarially determined contributions for the upcoming fiscal year, and then also a variety of numbers that go into the financial statements that your auditors prepare. Next slide, please. So like I said earlier, OPEB is other post-employment benefits. That's basically anything that isn't pensions, medical benefits are the big one, life insurance, that kind of thing. And so we have to do these valuations under certain standards that are called GASB 74 and 75. That's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and those are the standards that define how these liabilities are measured and recognized in your financial statements. These reports give information about your plan, the assets and liabilities. One thing that's important to note is that GASB does not require funding OPEB liabilities, just reporting them. So you do have an OPEB trust. You are pre-funding some money to it every year. That's not something that's required. Massachusetts general laws don't have a requirement for that. It's not the same as the retirement systems, where the retirement systems are required by law to be fully funded by 2040 at this time. Next slide, please. So, again, that's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that I mentioned on that last slide. That applies to the financial reports of all state and local government entities. Generally accepted accounting principles, you know, that's more kind of how things are done for the financial statements. And then finally, Michael and I, as well as Linda, who's not here tonight, those are the three of us on our team here at KMS Actuaries, working for the, on the town of Southborough's OPEB plan. We are all members of the American Academy of Actuaries, and so what that means is that we have a responsibility and willingness to comply with certain standards set for members of the academy that say, you know, we have to follow a code of professional conduct. We have certain continuing education standards that we have to meet, and then, like I mentioned on an earlier slide, we have to follow those ASOPS that define how, you know, assumptions are set, how things are reported, all of that. Next slide.
All right, great. So, this slide is going to cover the different pieces that go into the results and the disclosures for the town of Southborough's report. And it all starts with a census data submission that we receive with the assistance of the town treasurer, Brian Valentin, as well as the payroll coordinator for the town of Southborough. We completed for fiscal year 2024 what's known as a roll-forward valuation, and during roll-forward valuations, we do not require new demographic data on the town's active employees and retired employees. So we use the same data that was used for the town's fiscal year 2023 report, and we roll forward that data to the new measurement date of June 30th, 2024. After gathering the census data, we look at the town's benefit provisions. These items include items such as eligibility for the town's post-employment benefits, medical plan offerings, dental plan offerings, and life insurance plans that are available to retired employees. And it also includes how much, the percentage, that these retirees and the spouses of retirees pay towards their medical and dental premiums. The third piece is the actuarial assumptions. These look at several economic and demographic assumptions, with the main assumption that we review being the discount rate assumption during a roll-forward valuation. Once we have all three of these pieces together, we combine them, the census data, the benefit provisions, and the actuarial assumptions, and we use them to produce the final results for the town's valuation report, which can be used for funding and accounting purposes. So this next slide covers the plan provisions that are, that are applicable to the town of Southborough. So they offer, so these medical plans that are provided on this slide, these are plans that came into effect starting on July 1st, 2023. So, the town offers one Medicare supplemental plan for retirees and spouses of retirees who are currently covered under Medicare, and that is known as the Aetna Advantage Plan. The cost of the plan is shared between the town and the retirees, so the retirees are responsible for paying 25% of these monthly medical premiums, and the town is responsible for covering the other 75% of those premiums. And this plan is prevalent to the town of Southborough, and to help put it into perspective, we valued 193 retirees in the most recent census data submission, and of those 193 retirees, 122 of them elected the Aetna Advantage Plan. So, a little more than 60% of the town's retiree population elected this Aetna Advantage Plan. For any retirees who incurred a late Medicare enrollment penalty, the town will reimburse them for that cost if it is applicable to them. But that's only a handful of retirees. I, it was about, I believe it was 17 retirees and three covered spouses who incurred a late Medicare enrollment penalty. In addition to this Medicare supplemental plan, we also, the town also offers three non-Medicare plans, which are also the same plan offerings as the plans provided to active employees, and they are the Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare HMO Plan, the Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare PPO Plan, and the Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare Focus Plan, with the majority of the pre-65 retirees having the HMO plan. And the breakout is a little different. It varies by plan for these three offerings. So for the HMO and focus plans, the town will, the retire, the town retirees will contribute 25% of the medical premium, and the town will cover the remaining 75%. And for the PPO plan, the retirees will pay 50% of the medical premium, and the town will pay the remaining half of those monthly medical premiums. In addition to the medical plan offerings, the town also offers life insurance plans and dental coverage to its retirees. So for the life insurance, there is a $1,000 face value for retired employees, and the total monthly premium comes out to 42 cents, where the retirees contribute half of the premium, which is 21 cents, and the town covers the other 21 cents of the monthly premium. The dental insurance works the same way in terms of cost sharing, so the retirees, once again, they pay 50% of the dental premiums each month, and the town pays the remaining 50% of the dental premiums. And if you would like more info on the town's benefit provisions, you can refer to Section 5 of our valuation report. Great. So this next slide covers the assumptions and methodologies that went, that go into each of our valuation reports. So we use these assumptions to project expected benefit payments in the future, and this idea is mainly revolved around a major economic assumption, which is our discount rate. These are used to discount the future benefit payments to the present day, to essentially find a present value of all these future benefit payments. So the discount rate came out to 6.48% for June 30th, 2024, and this is a blended rate. So we use two different rates to come up with this value, the first one being a long-term expected rate of return of 6.5%, and we also used a high-quality tax-exempt bond rate, which is 3.93% as of June 30th, 2024. So, and these two items are based on projected benefits, current assets, and projected assets. This discount rate assumption also includes an inflation assumption, which has remained consistent since last year, and it is held at 2.5%. The other economic assumption that we review are healthcare trend rates. Because we are completing a roll-forward valuation, we do not change the trend rates that are provided in your report. So the way that it works is we start with 8% in the first year, and the trend rates continue to go down by 0.5%. So the second year, trend rates will go up by 7.5%, the third year will go down, will go up by 7%, and so on and so forth, until the trend rates reach an ultimate percentage of 4.1. We also look at some demographic assumptions on top of the economic assumptions, and once again, because this is a roll-forward report where we do not collect a new census data file from the town, these assumptions have not changed since the fiscal year 2023 report. And these demographic assumptions include mortality rates and mortality improvement scales. They include pre-retirement decrements, which include termination rates with disability rates and retirement rates, and it also includes participation rates, which refer to the probability of someone electing medical coverage or life insurance coverage upon retirement, as well as them, as well as the likeliness of them having a covered spouse, who's covered under at least a dental plan or a medical plan through the town.
Does anyone want to ask questions as we go, or you want to wait till they're done?
I'll wait, I've got some.
Okay, all right.
So, this next slide covers a lot of the key results that are outlined in our report. We divided it into two separate sections, so we have the OPEB trust assets to the left and the total OPEB liability to the right. So all of these values are expressed in thousands, and we'll start with the OPEB trust assets. So the beginning balance refers to the ending market value from June 30th, 2023, and that's approximately $3,036,000. The trust contributions refer to the $250,000 that the town consistently pays each year into the OPEB trust, and there are investment earnings of roughly $395,000. So adding these three items together, the beginning balance, the trust contributions, and the investment earnings, we get an ending balance of $3,681,000 for the market value as of June 30th, 2024. The rate of return accumulated on these assets comes out to roughly 12.11%, which is pretty good. And then the gain on the investments relative to what we expected the, the OPEB trust to gain is a positive value of about $199,000. So, moving on to the total OPEB liability, we have a few more items that go into our calculations, and it starts with the beginning balance, which once again refers to the liability as of June 30th, 2023. We have our benefits earned, which is also known as our service cost. We have the benefit payments paid to, to members of approximately $1,611,000, and we also have the interest accrued on the total OPEB liability. Because there were no changes to the plan provisions, and we didn't require the town to send this new demographic data about its active employees and retirees, we had no experience changes, and we also had no changes to the town's benefit plan provisions. So both of those items are, come out to zero. And then there was the other item, which is the assumption changes, which, there was only one assumption change from fiscal year 23 to fiscal year 24, and that was a change to the discount rate. And this change to the discount rate resulted in a decrease in the liability of about $5,416,000. And adding all these items together, from the beginning balance to the assumption changes line, we get an ending liability balance of $42,362,000 as of June 30th, 2024. Now, oh, I'm sorry, can we go back, please? Thank you. So, looking at some of the items underneath these tables, the net OPEB liability, that refers to the ending liability balance minus the ending OPEB trust balance. So it's the $42,362,000 minus $3,681,000, and that comes out to a figure of about $38,680,000 in liabilities after incorporating the assets. And in a similar calculation, we also provide the funded ratio, which is the trust's OPEB assets divided by the total OPEB liability in fiscal year 2024, and that comes out to a percentage of roughly 8.69%.
Okay, so this is just summarizing some of the events that impacted the valuation. Like Michael was saying, this is what's called a roll-forward valuation, where we don't collect new census data. We just use the data we collected back for the June 30th, 2023 disclosures to complete the valuation and just carry it forward to the June 30th, 2024 disclosure date for this current report. So, on the demographic side, all the assumptions are just assumed to be met, that all the experience, you know, we don't have any differing experience from what we assumed, and that leads to that $0 experience gain or loss that Michael pointed out on the previous slide. And then to tie back to that discount rate assumption that he was talking about, last year, as of June 30th, 2023, that discount rate was 5.59%, and then for June 30th, 2023... And then, for June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, it increased to six point four eight percent. Um, there were a number of reasons for this increase. Um, one of the biggest ones was that the long-term rate of return assumption increased from six percent to six and a half percent. And when we're calculating that assumption, what we're doing is we're looking at the town's target allocation, and then the long-term rate of return assumptions, um, by asset class. So, um, for a number of the asset classes, those, uh, return assumptions increased from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. And that led us, um, to be able to increase the overall long-term rate of return assumption for, by that half a percent, from six to six and a half percent. Um, additionally, the, um, municipal bond rate, um, that we use for the other piece of the, uh, discount rate calculation increased from three point six five percent in two thousand twenty-three to three point nine-three percent in two thousand twenty-four. So, when we're doing this calculation of the discount rate, what we're doing is looking at both the current, uh, OPEP trust assets and the expected future contributions to the OPEP trust to determine how long, um, the OPEP trust assets are expected to be sufficient to fund the future expected benefit payments. Um, the more assets that are in there currently, along with a, a good funding policy that, um, supports, uh, long-term funding, the higher discount rate we can use. So, the fact that the OPEP trust returned over twelve percent in a fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, that also helped increase the discount rate. Uh, so all of that together led to, as you saw on that previous slide, the total OPEP liability decreasing by around two point nine million dollars. And then, the other reason is I was talking about earlier that we prepare these valuation reports annually is because, um, results for them are reported on the town's, um, annual financial statements. Um, like Michael was saying, a couple slides back, um, one item that is reported is that net OPEP liability, that difference between, um, the liabilities and the current assets as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and that's that thirty-eight point seven million dollar number. And then, um, one other item that goes on to the financial statements is, um, an expense under GASB seventy-five, and that as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four is three point eight million dollars. Uh, so the components that go into that, a couple of them were back on the, uh, summary of results slide from earlier, the, uh, service cost and the interest cost that Michael talked about. And then, there are also recognitions of, um, experience gains and losses and assumption changes and investment gains and losses over the years. The components of that expense aren't necessarily all tied to the current year. If you're looking in our report at the calculation of that OPEP expense, the investment gains and losses are allowed to be recognized over a period of five years. And then, experience gains and losses and assumption changes are recognized over the average remaining, uh, service lifetime of the, uh, current OPEP plan population. So, any numbers you're seeing, uh, in that expense calculation uh, reflect, uh, pieces of those gains and losses over the, uh, past few years, so, some more recent valuations that are included in those numbers.
Okay, so this next slide covers the funding policy that is currently in place for the town of Southborough. So, since two thousand seventeen, the town has maintained a well-established funding policy that's been relatively consistent, where the town has decided to contribute two hundred fifty thousand dollars each year into the OPEP trust. So, this will likely be the case for the next several years. And, and then, future contributions are going to be based on when the Worcester Regional Retirement System becomes fully funded. So, the Worcester Regional Retirement System is expected to be fully funded in two thousand thirty-six. So, starting in two thousand thirty-seven, when the system becomes fully funded, the town will decide to reallocate the unfunded portion of their liability from the pension into their OPEP trust. So, that will greatly increase the town's contribution each year, starting in two thousand thirty-seven. And more details can be found about our projections for the town's OPEP trust in Appendix A of our report. And once again, the OPEP funded ratio that's associated with the town's OPEP trust is calculated as our actuarial value of assets divided by our actuarial accrued liability, which is another way of saying the total OPEP liability. And that comes out to a figure of roughly eight point seven percent funded for the town.
So, just a quick summary of what the OPEP trust is. Um, so, its purpose, as you would expect, is to accumulate assets to pre-fund those OPEP liabilities. What's really important about the trust is it can only be used for OPEP. It's dedicated to providing the benefits to current and future retirees. Um, all those assets, they're protected from creditors of the employer. The employer contributions must be irrevocable, meaning you cannot take out money from the OPEP trust for purposes other than paying those, um, retiree medical, dental, life insurance costs that, um, Michael summarized on the plan provision slide earlier. Uh, next slide. And then, this, um, one of our final slides here, um, this is just a graphical representation of the OPEP plan funded status dating back to two thousand sixteen, um, right when the current GASB standards were coming into effect. So, you'll see over the years, it's been, you know, fairly cons- you know, grew a little bit for a few years, and it kind of stayed consistent. It's gone up a little bit. And y- you know, what happens there is that over the years, they, you know, the town of Southborough has been putting in that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution consistently. Then, asset returns, you know, over the years have varied a little bit, something, you know, some good years, some maybe not-so-good years. And then, in terms of the liability, you'll see that, you know, that also has kind of gone up and down a little bit, and that has to do both with, um, the assumptions, like we talked about earlier, that this year we had a decrease in the liability because the discount rate became more favorable. But there have been times in the past, you know, when the, the, the bond rate dropped or other assumptions, maybe we're a little, you know, we had to make changes based on the experience of the plan or economic experience that maybe were a little less favorable or other, uh, demographic experience, things like plan premiums, uh, increased more than we expected, or maybe there were more new retirees than we expected there would be. That would lead to an increase in the liabilities. This just gives, uh, some idea of over the la- you know, last few years, what, what has been going on with the funded ratio of the plan and the assets and liabilities. Um, and then, this last slide is just kind of a reference slide here. Um, you know, if you have any que- questions, obviously you can ask them today, but also, our report is available if anybody, um, wants to look at it and get more information from that. Um, there's a link there to the, uh, GASB website. And then, our contact information, uh, both for KMS in general and for Michael and me is below if anyone needs to contact us after tonight. All right, uh, any questions?
I think we're gonna have quite a few questions. You've got a financially-oriented slickboard here. Um, Sam, you want to start?
I'm disappointed that we don't get through the fifty-seven pages of the packet last time that had all the details in it. But, uh, I'll defer to Al. Al seems to have a lot of questions, so maybe he's got mine.
Sure. Uh, can we go back to sort of the, the big, uh, the big slide? The, about ten slides back, one that's sort of the big summary slide.
This one?
Uh, yeah, no, not, uh, yes.
The one with all the numbers?
Yeah.
Key results for two thousand twenty-four, Amanda.
Yeah, thank you. That's the one.
This one.
Yep. So, so let me make sure that I kind of have the big picture here. Um, we have what appears to be a very scary balance, but maybe there's a way to manage it. So, we have something on the order of three point six million dollars in our trust fund. And the, and we're contributing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And out of that, we have to pay benefits on the order of one point six million. And the plan, as I understand that you've just laid out, is that we somehow have to make this money last until we get to twenty thirty-seven.
You don't pay those benefits out of this. This just keeps growing. The benefits are just paid. They're, they're part of our benefits budget in the town, so there's nothing being paid out of this.
It says benefits paid, so.
Well, they are, but not out of this.
That, that's correct. That currently, the benefits are just being paid out of the town's general funds. Now, when the, the trust gets better funded, you know, somewhere down the road, if the trust, you know, gets eighty, ninety, a hundred percent funded, that there is the option to start paying benefits out of the trust. And, you know, the better funded you get, the more feasible that becomes. That's certainly a discussion that, you know, we've had with clients, you know, who are interested in doing that at some point down the road, that we work with them to develop a plan for doing that in the future. But right now, those benefits are not paid from this trust.
Okay. So, this, so we are simply accumulating these funds in the hopes that someday, there will be sufficient monies there to support the benefits i- in, in, in an appropriate way, what we should have done for decades, but haven't.
Yeah, so we just, we're doing, two fifty, of course, is not going to get you there. The, the key is when we stop, um, funding the pension, we've got that caught up. Then, we can, um, move that money over to this and try to get.
So, uh, yeah, no, I, I get it. So, that, in twenty thirty-seven, which is in twelve years, which, you know.
Be in your fourth term.
Which, what, pardon?
Be in your fourth term, Al.
Yeah, my fourth term, yeah. Keep dreaming. Uh, you, you, yeah, believe me, you won't want to see me in twelve years. Uh, the, uh, when would we anticipate actually having a sufficient balance in the trust that we could, in fact, support benefits from the trust rather than from the general fund?
Or at least some of them. When do you start? So, that's, so it sounds like we've got to have a plan in place and we look.
Well, I, I, I understand. I, I got the plan. And my question is, you know, when do you throw the switch and either begin to or come? I, ideally, if we had, you know, funded this properly, you know, during the term of the employee's service, we would be able to pay, pay it out of the fund. But obviously, we can't because we didn't do that. So, what year do you anticipate that we would be able to begin funding, uh, at least some of this out of the trust rather than out of the general fund?
And of course, that's kind of a loaded question, because all of that depends on, you know, all of the assumptions being met, both on the asset and liability side. And as you're, while aware, there has been quite a bit of, uh, volatility just on the asset side recently. But looking at our Appendix A that Michael was talking about, when we have those contributions, um, coming in, you know, starting in two thousand thirty-seven, moving that Worcester Regional amount there, we have those, uh, contributions running through two thousand forty-eight and then not having any more needed. So, so somewhere in that, you know, late twenty forties, based on the current, um, projections, would be probably where we'd be looking at, you know, things would be a lot better funded.
You said the late twenty forties?
Forties, yes.
Late twenty forties?
Yeah. All right. So, I, I'm not going to worry about it.
You know, and again, that's just because the contributions, based on the current policy, are basically kind of backloaded with the Worcester Regional, um, you know, full funding date being, you know, again, twelve years out. You know, certainly, that amount could, or that, uh, timing could change if you were able to contribute more at an earlier date.
Yeah. We can't, we can't find the money to hire police officers, so. All right, that, that, that was the, the big question I have. I mean, you know, the, got it.
Yeah, again, so many moving parts to that between now and then, that, uh, it's almost not worth worrying about anything here in terms of what you do, which you think is prudent in terms of contributions and investment policy and so forth. I have another question if I can, then.
Okay.
In terms of your, um, rate of return on asset categories that go into the discount rate, where do those come from? Is that something that you folks do? Or do you have a service or advisor that you use to determine those rates?
Michael, you want to answer that, or I, I can if you want, you don't want to?
Sure, I, I can go into that. So, the long-term rate of return that we use each year is based on two factors. The first one is the town's investment policy statement, which has recently had a few revisions to the target allocations that they hope to achieve within the OPEP trust portfolio. And the second item is the long-term rates of return for each asset class. And the long-term rates of return are provided by the town's investment consultant, Bartholomew. And we use, uh, a weighted average essentially of the target allocations and these long-term rates of return for each asset class. And then, we provide a rough estimate using that calculated value with inflation to determine the long-term rate of return, which will then translate into the discount rate assumption that we end up using.
Thanks. A question for Brian. Brian, I don't recall, did we, have we voted on, uh, percentages into the various asset categories? Is that something that?
Who's we?
Select board. It's just you, okay. Okay. Uh, that's an interesting issue, then.
So, I, can I just piggy onto yours and go back to you? So, Bartholomew manages the money. Is that, that true?
Right.
Okay. And do they manage the trust funds and everything, or is it just the OPEP? They manage every, anything that's managed, they're doing as far as where we've got money in a true investment portfolio, right?
The commissioner of trust funds money is in that bucket too with them as well.
Okay. Okay. So, who is sitting down and determining the asset allocation for that, for those buckets?
I sit down with, well.
There he is.
Um, so the trust funds is a little different. The trust fund committee actually has a, a gentleman who, um, our chair, who is a little specialized in investing, and he sits down with me and goes over the, um, the meetings with, uh, for the trust funds. For CPC and OPEB, and I think that's it, the other two.
That's the three, right?
Um, that's the three. Um, I sit down twice a year with them. They'll make recommendations, and then we just.
Bartholomew?
Yes. Yes. Yep.
Yeah, that's good enough.
Yep.
I just want to make sure this is nowhere near the Worcester Regional pension plan.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Don't run away quite yet. I just want to confirm, because in case anybody is out there listening, uh, there are certain powers which reside with the treasurer and not with this board. And I believe these are among those that actually reside with the treasurer.
Yes. However, um,
Obviously.
I'm respectful of people's opinions. And in fact, the CPC did approach me with a question the past year, sort of on this level. And I've invited Lisa, um, to attend these meetings with Bartholomew to just sit in and listen, so.
Well, they're happy when the market's going up, and then they get worried when the market goes down as far as their funds go.
Right.
Can you imagine a select board trying to do asset allocation? So, I think this is a good plan to.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think it's a, it's an excellent plan. It keeps us from investing in our brother-in-law's beefsteaks minds.
Um, I have a related question for Michael, then. In terms of the, uh, discount rate, it looks like the, uh, the rate of, long-term rate of return is weighted about ninety-eight percent versus the, um, municipal bond rate there. Is that actually true?
So, you're saying that it be- that it's closer to the, the long-term rate of return this year compared to last year?
It's a weighted average. It's got ninety-eight percent of the weight on the long-term rate of return. Is there any other more complicated formula for that, for the discount rate?
It, there's, there's not much that goes into it. We do, do perform this crossover calculation between the, between the, uh, the assets and the, the bond rate. And there has been significant growth in the town's assets. So, when we perform this crossover valuation, it, we've just seen a lot of improvements in the discount rate assumption. So, there aren't a lot more factors, I would say, that go into the, the calculation. But just say that due to the, the improving performance of the assets, the discount rate has been much closer to the long-term rate of return.
I'll, I'll chime in briefly. So, um, kind of back to that Appendix A of our report, if anybody wants to look at that later. What's going on basically is, um, in that crossover calculation Michael's talking about, it's looking at, you know, are these benefit payments in the future expected to be funded or not? So, what's happening that we're not quite at the six and a half percent is there's a couple years there in, uh, twenty thirty-six and twenty thirty-seven, right before those, um, Worcester Regional contributions kick in, where there's a, a portion of the benefit payments that are, you know, not, the trust is not expected to be sufficient to cover them. So, that's why there's still that, a little bit of the bond rate kicking in there.
Okay, thank you.
So, Brian, I was surprised at where they started, that there's only two, only two-thirds of retirees are taking our health insurance? So, and that's not just the people, the two or three that opted out because they didn't like Aetna? This is a group of people that have, their spouses have it, or?
Michael, you, were you just saying that two-thirds are on Medicare plans earlier as opposed to, um, pre, pre-sixty-five plans? Is that what you were talking about?
Correct. So, what, so what I was referring to with those numbers was that, uh, roughly more than a little over sixty percent of the town's retiree population elected the Aetna Advantage Plan. There are a few retirees who are younger than sixty-five and, as a result, not yet eligible for Medicare, who are covered under these pre-Medicare plans, which, again, are the HMO, PPO, and Focus Plans from Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare. So.
So Michael, we understand that and we also know there's a couple of people that didn't like the Aetna plan, so they chose to do their own thing. But it still sounds like there's a group of people, retirees, that are Medicare eligible that have not taken the health insurance program here, the retired health insurance program. They've done something else.
Which is typically a spouse plan, it's a richer plan.
Yeah, it could be the spouse, whatever, but it looks like there is a group. I just didn't realize there was that many that were doing something else. And the opt-out, the buyout, the opt-out for the active employees doesn't apply to this. There's no incentive to do that, right? Okay.
I have a question on the demographics, Amanda and Michael. We're working on 23 data now. How frequently do you update that, every couple of years or so?
Two years.
Yeah, we'll be doing a full valuation this year. So this summer we'll be collecting on new data as of June 30th, 2025.
Thank you.
I have one more sort of little question. I'm not even sure it's your bailiwick. The life insurance benefit, the $1,000 life insurance benefit, is that through a third party or is that something that the town self-insures?
I unfortunately do not know the answer to that.
That is, that's offered through Boston Mutual.
And it's, it's not that it's a thousand, it's that, that's what the cost is per thousand? I mean, we're not talking about a $1,000 life insurance policy, are we?
It is a $1,000 life insurance policy, yes. That's pretty typical for these retiree life insurance plans that it's, you know, your active life insurance tends to be richer, but once people retire, we commonly see, you know, anywhere from about, from about a thousand, you know, like South Borough's offering up to maybe $5,000 are the amounts we see. But these are generally very small amounts offered to the retirees. And as a result, the premiums for them are very low. As Michael noted, it's like 42 cents a month and that's split between the town and the retirees. But yes, it's truly only a thousand dollars.
It's five dollars a year, I mean.
Not worth the accounting cost.
Well, I was going to say, I mean.
I'm not going to, I agree. I don't know why you bother, but whatever.
That doesn't pay for your flowers for your funeral.
I can't imagine anybody would offer that policy.
So obviously, the vast majority, the cost of OPEB to us is the health insurance. It's not dental and it's not life insurance for sure. It's, it's health insurance, right?
Correct. And the overwhelming majority of the health insurance is that Medicare cost because, you know, that's the longer time that you expect retirees, you know, post-65 to be covered on that, that they'll generally only be on those pre-65 plans for a few years and then they'll move over to those Medicare plans.
Okay, so just to, with what you just said, the majority of the cost is retirees are retirees that are not Medicare eligible yet?
Well, if you're looking at like the, just breaking out the liability between like when they're covered under a Medicare plan versus when they're covered under a non-Medicare plan, the majority of that, whether it's somebody who's already on a Medicare plan or somebody who's expected to, you know, move to one in the future when they turn 65, it's when they're on that Medicare supplemental plan, just because of how long they're expected to be on it, that, you know, maybe it's going to be 10, 15, 20 years, they'll be covered under that plan versus maybe five years on a pre-Medicare plan.
I mean, it's quite a benefit to know that you can retire at whatever, 57, 58, Vanessa? When are you going to retire? And have seven years still of, you know, health insurance that you had, whether you're active or not, have to worry about the Medicare.
Big liability there. Typically, public safety employees can retire.
Yeah, the public, public safety employees, in terms of, you know, the greater portion of those pre-Medicare liabilities, yes, they would account for a larger portion of that just because they are expected to retire earlier and be on those plans longer. That's correct.
All right, any other questions, Marguerite? Do you have any questions?
I have sort of one more quick one then. And again, I think it's not necessarily directed this way. What is the premium on the current Aetna plan? Do you know what it is for monthly?
We have, I think, let me, I've got our report open, but let me see. Ours is outdated by at least one year and possibly two. Yeah, we have the January 1st, 2024 premium, which is $300. We do not have the 2025 number yet. We'll be collecting that with the upcoming valuation this summer.
It went up 10%, so call it 330.
I'm a little baffled about that one. I have a very good Blue Cross Blue Shield Medicare Advantage Plan.
Mine's less too.
Mine, no, it's zero dollars out of pocket, you know, so.
Well, but you can get those for dear out of pocket, but they get you on the back end of that.
Ah, it's, I've been incredibly, I've got health issues and been very happy with it. I think we need to take a really hard look at this.
Andrew's got questions.
Sure. My question is, do you think that the 250 annual contribution that we've been making to the OPEB trust fund is a good number? Or do you think we should consider increasing it? And what, what experience have you seen in terms of what other municipalities do in terms of the level of their annual contributions to their OPEB trust fund?
So there's a number of things to talk about there. As I was saying earlier, you know, right now, the 250,000 isn't a lot. It's not really, you know, moving the needle that much each year. When it really starts to go up is, you know, 12 years from now, when contributions from Worcester Regional are expected to kick in. So certainly, you know, increasing that, like I was saying earlier, at an earlier date, would help move that funded status up more quickly. We do have in our report a calculation of what's called an actuarially determined employer contribution, where we're amortizing that unfunded liability over a period of 30 years. So that amount is actually closer, now, keep in mind that this doesn't include, so this, that amount for 2025 is about 4.3 million dollars. But that also includes the expected benefit payments, which last year were 1.6 million. So the contribution net of those expected benefit payments would be probably closer to somewhere in the two, you know, about two and a half million dollar range there. What we've done for some clients, if they're interested in looking at, you know, different funding options, we've prepared some projections where clients have come to us and said, okay, how much would it take for us to be funded in 20, 30 years? You know, what would happen if we funded this amount? You know, that's certainly something that we could work with the town on. If they were interested in seeing some different scenarios, we'd be happy to, you know, do that work, have those conversations. In terms of what we see with other municipalities, kind of all over the place, to be honest. Some of them are funding this actuarially determined contribution and are, you know, coming close to being fully funded. We have a couple that are actually over 100% funded, but that's not common. There are quite a few that are just funding a flat amount every year, not even doing that increase when the retirement system is fully funded. We do have a few others who are doing that, but there are a number of clients of ours that are just funding a flat amount every year. And, you know, so there are a whole bunch of different approaches that we've seen taken and it just really kind of depends on, you know, what the funds are available. Some of our clients are just basically saying, you know, we'll put in what we can based on a free cash allocation or percentage of payroll or something like that. I mean, it really is up to the town, you know, the municipality to say, okay, you know, is this a priority for us? Do we have the funds available to make it happen? You know, some, you know, I had a meeting with a client last week, they are very, very focused on OPEB and, you know, are looking for a whole bunch of calculations of actuarially determined contributions, where there are other clients that I've worked with where they just might put in a nominal amount every year or maybe not even put something in every year and they're okay just counting at the bond rate, that OPEB just really isn't a priority for them. It's just really all about funds and priorities, I guess, is what I'd say.
One thing we'll talk about when we get to the debt policy, Tony Roselli corrected us. So S and P doesn't look at OPEB as far as that computation per capita, so we're taking that out, so they're not looking at OPEB.
Gives us a little more flexibility there, which is good. But Andrew, to your point, I mean, I'm actually certainly interested in thinking about that kind of thing. It seems to me though that given the current prospect for the next couple of years here, that's a tough sell, but if we can actually do something about generating revenue, as we're talking about from commercial sources, that could be a way to find opportunity to put more contribution in here. So that seems to me to be an interesting thing to continue to think about, talk about.
If we weren't already overfunding the pension to get that caught up, I'd be maybe more interested. But we're doing that.
Yep.
So I don't see how we do both simultaneously.
When you say we're overfunding the pension, that's because we're forced to.
Yeah, yeah. We're being assessed by Worcester Regional to get everybody caught up, so we have no choice.
Even with that bump in 2036 or '07, we're still going to be pretty much behind the eight ball. So interesting question would be to assume you get that, you know, what does that do for us if we start now to think about that calculation?
There's the money coming.
Premature.
Okay, so Amanda and Michael, thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody in the audience with a hand raised?
Nope.
Anybody here? Tim is here.
We've been able to discourage all of them so far here.
I mean, I wondered if the lady that was here last week that seemed to be actuarial.
I have some suggestions.
Related was going to come back, but she didn't. Okay, so thank you guys, very informative.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
What's that? You gave a lot of money.
The annual depression, we're behind on this and pensions too, of course.
All right, we're moving on. So reports, the only thing I've got is the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority did, the board officially did vote this week to award the town 35 plus $1 million for the Neri project. We knew this was coming. It was more of a formality because the staff had recommended it, so we knew what the number was going to be, but it's nice to have it done. It was unanimous vote. Our project was the least cost project that was voted on that day. Another project came forth that day they voted on that exactly the number of students that the new Neri is supposed to have, 610, and it was 15% more square footers than what we have and cost more. So I think it's, I forget the town. But anyway, that was on there too. But we were the least costly school as far as the ones they voted on on Wednesday. But it's done, we've got the letter. So that part, we can say that, we can count on that as much as you can count on anything. Okay, there's nobody else submitted a members' report? Anybody have a change of heart? Mark?
So I just have one item I just wanted to mention. I know the board was notified of this earlier this week, but Chief Newell has been notified that one of our officers, Detective Owen O'Brien, is being awarded the Officer of the Year Award from the Massachusetts Chapter of Mothers Against Drunk Driving. This is their highest annual law enforcement award that they, they give out each year. Last year, Detective O'Brien made over 45 OUI arrests and has been very proactive in that regard. This is a great honor for our department. It's great to see our officers get recognized, whether it be on the local, you know, the state or the national level. So this is, this is great. He'll be recognized on June 10th in an event up in Devens. I've already told the chief I'd be honored to attend and looking forward to that. Also want to thank Lieutenant Wayland, who the chief tasked with putting together the application to submit for consideration, which was the genesis of this award. So again, great acknowledgement for our department and, you know, keep up the good work.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And for all of the questions we get about enforcement from people, here's a good example that they are out there doing good things.
You know, I used to be chair of MAD in Massachusetts for a long time. And one of my partners at Ernst &amp; Wynn, his daughter had gotten killed by a drunk traffic when she was 16. So I got into it big time. It's just amazing the work that organization does, so good for them to honor him. So I'll go with you. Okay. All right, moving on, considering, and we're going to remove E at Al's request. He's not ready to talk about the PERC test on Pinecone Lane. So we've got A, B, C, D. Anyone wanting to hold? Any of them?
A.
Okay, anybody else? I actually want to hold C, just to talk about it for a second, make sure everybody understands. I didn't know we were doing this. I'm not sure where I missed that, but I did. Okay, so we're going to hold A and C. So I'll make a motion to approve items B and D.
Second.
All in favor? And we signed the MWR, MWRA loan docs for Brian, so that's off to the races. Okay, Sam, minutes?
A, small thing, lines three and four. Mr. Hamilton was actually absent, it listed him as present and absent, so he, man can be in both places at one time. Very impressive. He's both here and there.
All right, so Al should be deleted from present, correct?
In line three and four.
Many people want to delete me.
Okay, anything else?
Any change, that's it.
That's it?
I have got on line 38, Mauro's is spelled wrong.
What line?
Line 38.
So Mauro should be spelled M-A-U-R-O, apostrophe S, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Marguerite?
On line 14, Ms. Cook has two S's.
Oh, I do, a Ms. Cook. All right, so I'm a Ms., Ms. Cook.
Losing my touch.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve amendments from April 18th as amended.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so Brian, since you're here, so did you guys know about the OPEB policy? I didn't know this. I mean, that's a lot of money to save.
Yep.
I mean, that's a very good deal. So we should continue to make sure that people know about it, right? So I guess again, whoever it is goes on their spouse's insurance policy, right?
Yeah, that's a common corporate trick. I've used that for years, convince people to go on their spouse's policy to save me money.
Of course. I thought after the Affordable Care Act, that you were supposed to take the insurance you're offered, so if both spouses had it, you're supposed to take it. There are times where you could double up. I used to, my husband and I, we were on both policies for a long time when we first started working, right? But I know you can't do that anymore, so. Anyway, good job. So you make sure everybody knows about it, right? And do you think they do?
I hope so.
I mean, that is a whole lot of money to save.
Actually.
Sorry, Brian.
But just, no, because you brought it up, I just had a couple of inquiries about it recently, just coincidentally in probably the last three or four weeks. So, but we do notify the schools, it's been renewed, try to get the word out to them too. The schools actually had quite a few people, maybe two or three years ago, and then a few dropped off and I'm not sure why, but it could have been a number of reasons. But, and that's why we recommended increasing the payback to the reimbursement to the employee because you've seen the health insurance premiums the last few years, how they've gone up. And if you don't keep up proportionally, it becomes less marketable to say, can you take this, you know, reimbursement, so.
No, that's a good tactic, absolutely.
Hopefully, we'll get some more this year, more the merrier.
I think we've got a reasonably good plan, but there are some pretty rich ones out there in other parts of the world.
Yeah, yes.
This depends on where that spouse works.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions on the opt-out? So I'll make a motion to approve the health insurance opt-out policy renewal.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so that takes care of consent. All right, two more things. The final words on the special town meeting, you got your warrant in front of you. You see that we got this down to a couple of pages, save some paper.
The world's thinnest warrant.
Yes, well, I mean, seriously, why do you need all that stuff on the special? So save some money there. I think Jim even thought we could just do it, you know, a piece of paper we could just stick out, but anyway, we got a pretty color. So the one big thing that's changed that should make some people happy is we've switched where the main meeting's going to take place. It's going to be actually in the auditorium at Algonquin instead of the gym. So both are still going to be used, so the gym's going to be for families with children and I guess overflow if we fill up the auditorium. But that way, the children, Jim, I'm trying to say this, can run around a little bit in the gym if they get antsy. So the main meeting is going to be in the auditorium, okay? Anything else you want me to say?
I just want to remind the board, the board is posted for 8:30 that morning, room B 122 at Algonquin. And the building committee is posted for 8 o'clock. There was a couple of other room postings, I don't have them with me, but.
They're right next to each other, I think it's.
But it's 122, 123, 124, so they're all, yeah, they're all right in that area.
Advisory's got one too.
Yes.
All right, Jim, anything else you want me to say about special town meeting? Yeah?
Thank you. There's a tremendous amount of misinformation in social media flirting around, pre-registration, fees to attend, you name it. This is the same as any other town meeting, any registered voter can attend, they can bring their children, check-in starts at 7:30, it's as simple as that. And the number of calls and the variety of things we've had is just quite a head-scratcher. People have also inquired in coming person to cast a ballot for their vote at the town meeting, and they can't do that because they just can't. Which means we to the, if I can segue a second away from that, um, the deadline to request a ballot to be mailed to somebody was 5 o'clock today, and we had more than 100 requests that came in today. The last batch will be brought down to the post office at 6 o'clock tomorrow, and they're wonderful to deal with. They will deliver all the ballots to people tomorrow. So the deadline is passed to mail a ballot to anybody. The rules for elections and ballots and this and that are written by the same people that wrote the tax code. It's convoluted, okay? But there is still an option that anybody who's going to be out of town on election day does have the right to come and vote in person between now and the election, when the York Clerk's office opens. So, uh, it's on the website now, they can come from 8 to 5 tomorrow, 8 to 5 on Thursday. We're going to be closed all day Friday as we set up for the, uh, town meeting, or they can come on Monday from 8 to 12. For any rea- for, i- if somebody's going to be out of town, if they have an illness, or if they have a medical, uh, excuse me, a religious reason why they can't, can't attend, they have to come in person, fill out the form, and they can vote right at the counter. Those are the only options open to anybody at this point. Just wanted to get it out there, and if people want to take advantage of it, they can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so one thing left is to, um, discuss the debt policy that we started discussing last meeting and decide whether we want to approve the debt policy tonight. So Andrew Faff has signed off on this. Um, Tony Roselli has signed off on it with the one change that's noted, um, in the blue box under debt limits, where he has stricken OPEB liability because it's not part of that computation. That's all he did. He read it, he's happy with it. Andrew's happy with it. Um, Al?
Uh, I'm not happy.
I'm not happy with it. Uh, I, I think it's too liberal, and, um, I continue to want, uh, any monies that are showing up on your tax bill, which would be the CPA and any potential, um, water enter- stormwater enterprise funds to count in the same pool as the, uh, as the debt that's constrained by the general fund.
Okay, so you would, if you had your druthers, you would include, uh, what we're calling self-supporting debt?
There's, there are, well, first off, I don't.
That's water enterprise fund too. You're distinguishing water enterprise fund from a potential stormwater enterprise fund?
So, there are what is euphemistically called self-supporting debt that is in fact nothing more than a property tax of one form or another. Those property taxes would include the CPA. The CPA is a property tax. The, if we engage in a stormwater enterprise fund, the stormwater enterprise fund is a property tax.
Okay, so those two, water enterprise fund, you are distinguishing because that's supported by water revenue, okay.
Yeah, that, that's separate from, um, um, the water enterprise fund, which is, uh, s- supported by water receipts. And so I would include those in, uh, debt that is constrained by this 10% or whatever, uh, what I would consider to be a more reasonable number, but I know I'm going to lose that one. And the, um, you know, then if you want to take, uh, en- encounter balance to that, if you want to add to the general fund, the, uh, revenue side of that, that is to take the CPA receipts and add them to the general fund, and you were to take the stormwater enterprise fund and add that to the general fund and take the sum of those three numbers and call that, um, property tax revenue or whatever we want to call it, and use that to compare that to the, the con- the percent, the 10, what's now the 10% constraint. That would strike me as a more reasonable thing, because what we're doing there is we are taking all of the monies that are fundamentally derived from the property, a property tax of one form or another, and, plus a few other sources, and constraining them li- similarly, so that, for example, if someday in the future we were to choose not to participate in the CPA anymore because it just didn't make financial sense, we would not, you know, suddenly, you know, the, um, see a shift in our, um, in, in those ratios.
So what you're suggesting is not illogical. So take the CPA example. So if down the road we were to decide to eliminate the surtax, right? Vote to do it. So you don't have it anymore. Doesn't mean you don't still have some debt, though, hanging out there, and that's, that's what your point is?
The debt is guaranteed.
Okay, but that's what your point is?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um.
We could change the policy at that point, too.
Yeah, so, um, but again, what he's proposing is not logical. I would like to, I personally am happy with the way it's written, um, but I understand what Al is saying. Andrew, Sam, Marguerite? So, Brian, just to be clear, you are happy with the policy that's in front of us as far as the proposal, right? Tony Roselli was happy with it, other than what he struck, right? And Andrew Faff, I already talked to him, I know he is recommending that this was it, okay? So Al? I mean, again, what he's proposing is not unreasonable. I, I still think there should be distinction between the, the 10% and the 14%. I, I think it's the better answer, but, um, I'm one person. So Sam, any desire to change what's proposed here?
I mean, I'm okay with this. I don't feel strongly about Al's suggestion, um, necessarily one way or the other.
Andrew?
Um, I'm fine with the way it is.
I mean, it can, this is not written in stone. I mean, it can always be changed if, for example, the CPA were to go away, right? You might, I wouldn't change it. You're okay, Brian, right? All right, Andrew is not in the audience.
He is, yes.
So can you bring him over if he's willing to come over? Yeah? Force him over.
He's got his hand up, so.
Hi there.
Hey, everybody.
Hey. So Andrew, did you hear the entire discussion?
I did.
Okay, so, um, Al would like to basically tighten up the 14% and bring those, um, into the 10%. There doesn't seem to be much appetite here with anybody else to do that, um, so wanted to make sure we understood where you were.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, one, I think, you know, we don't have the, um, stormwater yet, but that wouldn't be a property tax. That would be a usage fee, just like you would with water, right? So that's considered a user, user fee.
It's not a user fee, it's a tax.
It's a user fee, Al. It's based upon your impervious surface. It, it follows all three characteristics of the, um, ability to charge it as a fee. Passes the Emerson test as a fee.
It walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, you know? We can call it, we can use pretty words, but it's a tax.
All right, so we'll, we'll respectfully disagree on that one. Keep going, Andrew.
Yeah, and then, you know, the CPA one, again, I don't, I don't, I don't see that as, as really, I mean, it's already in the second one. The only difference is, you know, CPA is its own, own animal, it's going to have its own higher ratio, right? We're just kind of combining apples and oranges, right? I mean, so, it's the, the debt service on CPA can go up to, you know, basically, you know, a good majority of the CPA, that's the, how they, you know, the self-supporting portion of it, the, the surcharge amount, you can, that's what you can do to up your debt service, right? You can't include the match, but you can include all of the, um, or 80% or, Brian, correct me, whatever the ratio is for the allowable debt services is, uh, percentage of your, um, base surcharge. So you can go a lot higher by standard there than you can for regular general fund debt. So I think you're just mixing two concepts, and I feel like it's better in the 14% calculation than in the 10%. But it's not a huge number, but I just think it's not accurate.
And if we eliminated CPA, we could always revisit the policy and have another discussion around what the calculation ought to be.
If there was still debt left over at that point.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Andrew? Okay, Andrew, Dennyton?
I move that we approve the debt management policy, um, that's in front of us here, including the one red line edit that Tony Roselli had, which is to strike OPEB liability in the last bullet point of the debt limits of the policy summary.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, one point. We do have the Dennyton bylaw.
No, that has nothing to do with this. It has nothing to do with this.
This is a policy.
No, the, the, the policies are, are not subject to that. That has to do with regulations where.
Okay, all right.
Which has.
Thank you for explaining.
Specific authority, okay.
I have to admit, it's a little confusing what's subject to it or not, but go ahead. Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. Um, all in favor of adopting the debt management policy in front of us, subject to the one edit by Tony Roselli? So four, all opposed. Okay, so four, one. Okay, thank you, Andrew. Again. All right, I think that's it, right?
Public comment. Hours, assignments.
Office hours. Okay, so we talked about this before, and Sam and I bowed out because we, we, we don't know we're going to be here next week.
Well, I'm on the calendar for Wednesday.
So it's you?
But I don't know whether it's.
I mean, it's the day after the town election, it's probably a horrible day.
I don't know, it's on my calendar.
I know, what, no, okay, so do it then. And, and somebody said, Marguerite, were you doing it with him? Or Al? One, the three of you were going to do, two of the three of you were going to do it. It wasn't Sam and I. Office hours. So I put office hours on the, um, day after town.
Election.
Election, the 14th.
Okay.
We got, so who's doing it? You now have a quorum.
Okay.
Okay, so Marguerite and Al are going to do it? Okay, so I, I doubt if you have much business, given what it is, but you never know. Maybe you'll have a stampede, so.
That's right. I'm going to be busy demanding a recount that day.
All right, so I think that's it. So, um, Vanessa, um, any public comment? Any hands raised? Ooh, Mr. Hagerty, come on up.
Thanks, as you know, uh, we recently hired a deputy town clerk. We had 141 people apply for the job. We did nine second, uh, interviews, check that, nine interviews and then two final interviews. And I want to publicly thank Vanessa Hale. Uh, it was a pleasure to work with her, and I've done a lot of interviews in my prior career, and I did a lot in this. And she was, did a terrific job and really helped us, uh, get this, and I just want to publicly thank her for, for helping all this.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'm glad you've got, um, that hired, and I'm glad you've got Josie Berry for the summer, so that's good. Okay, any public, anybody else have a hand raised in the audience?
Nope.
No? Okay. Um, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Al, Marguerite? What's the matter?
Voting to adjourn.
But Al is getting an award on Wednesday night at the library for throwing and donating so much food.
Okay, so. The Rotary Club is definitely honoring Al and Diana, his wife, um, his equal and maybe possibly better half at the library.
So office hours are supposed to be Wednesday at 7:00.
Okay, will you raise your hand to adjourn? You guys were just talking, okay. Five, to adjourn, 5-0, Richard to adjourn. Thank you.